Do it.
Let the government have their money.
Huh?
Just let the government keep that social security.
At least till I'm sixty-seven, then they can't.
Well, that's true. That is true.
Then I'd go both.
That's all I made.
On paper.
Yeah, I don't have that big, uh, post office to come and sign, so I like spending money.
I'm both of them.
I know, you go cruises, you do it.
It's the truck driving boyfriend thing.
No, I didn't. Well, I don't know if I want to do that either.
She liked it. Kayla went, my daughter. Two people. Two people for her.
I'm gonna have to hear that.
And you can't leave.
That's why I gotta keep working.
And then six o'clock, we will, everyone's roll call?
Mr. Oglesby?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Jordan? Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. La Turner?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
If you will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda tonight, we have meeting minutes to approve from regular council meeting minutes of April twenty-first and library meeting minutes from March twenty-fifth.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes, council meeting minutes from four twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, and the library meeting minutes from four twenty-one, twenty, twenty-twenty-five.
I think you said those dates backwards.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Above.
I make a motion that we approve the council meeting, meeting minutes from four twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five and the library meeting minutes from four twenty-one, twenty-five.
Library is March twenty-fifth.
March twenty.
I skipped on down there, I'm sorry. You think you could do it again one more time, or?
Sure, three times in a row.
The regular coun- I make a motion that we approve the regular council meeting minutes from four twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five and the library meeting minutes from three twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five.
We have a motion by Bob La Turner to approve meeting minutes, uh, council meeting April twenty-first of twenty-twenty-five and library meeting of March twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five.
So good.
Second by Lauren Harding, all in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have bills to pay, one hundred and forty-three thousand, one ninety-three and fifty-six cents.
I make a motion that we appropriate funds to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Bob La Turner to pay the bills.
Second.
Second by Neil Oglesby, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, let's skip down, we have, uh, for an update on zero 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 King's Circle. Chief Allison, would you like to give us an update on that?
As far as the trailer?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I have my code enforcement officer here, he took pictures, but it seems that they've taken some windows and stuff out of it, but it's still in, still sitting on the lot. With a few, minus a door and a few windows up. We have some current pictures if you can see them, but. So really no change other than it's still there.
I talked to Ms. Raina today, um, and she, so she's a property owner. She is in the process of taking it down and has requested, um, to have it down, she thinks she can have it down in two weeks. She told me she met some gentleman that she thinks can help, she's gonna communicate with them this week. But she started taking it down, thinks in two weeks. Um, she, she really said maybe by the weekend, but with weather and stuff that will have an effect and impact on it, so in two weeks she can have it down. Is that accurate?
Well, they're accepting that there, it's almost demolished now. It's been completely gutted, the roof is off of it, there's very little to take down.
Yeah. But you said about two weeks.
Because of weather, but I'm sure I'll have it down by Friday.
Yeah. Yeah. So, everybody good with that update? Yeah? Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I mean, if it ends up being, being a linger pile of crap laying right there, we may get time to readdress it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if we need to talk about it again next time, then we just need to haul it off.
Okay. All right, next item, we have eleven oh nine Short. So this, uh, it was a house, um, on Short Street there, and it's been demolished for probably a good portion of a year, maybe a little more than that, so it's in a big pile of rubble right now. Um, if you've ever drove by, you can see, you can really probably see it from Main Street if you're driving down. And it's just been sitting there forever. So what we need to do is, uh, they've been sent a ten-day notice, that those ten days are up for cleaning it up. Um, and so the resolution, if we choose to go this way, would be to have a hearing on the property because it just needs to be cleaned up. The house was condemned, um, the, the owner understood that, had it demolished. I think there was some, all kinds of stuff, from what I gather, miscommunication on, um, equipment usage for the, for the gentleman that tore it down, they had some mechanic problems there, and then miscommunication of who was gonna clean it up, and then it's just sat there for months on end, so, um.
Did they answer the ten-day notice?
No. Yeah, so that's where I hear we would have to have a resolution, of course, to give them an opportunity to come before and say whether they are gonna clean it up, what their plan is, or if we go in and then, you know, charge it to their property.
What was the address?
Eleven oh nine Short.
Margaritaville.
Yeah. Big two-story, it was a big two-story, right, White House.
Did they, uh, they did get the certified letter? Was that how we do that, or did we post it on the thing?
Uh, enforcement did it.
He had served it, didn't he?
Yeah.
So, what, what resolution would be? It would be, it would be resolution twenty-five oh seven, um, like I said, it was already probably close to two years ago. I don't have the exact date for the condemnation list, I don't know if you remember, but almost the whole roof and porch and oning, it was leaning and almost falling off, so it was considered a hazard, um, to the public, and so that's then when they, um, had it demolished, and then it's just been sitting in a big pile of rubble since. So, and that's where it's at today. Why would it be today? I didn't go by too long, it's still there today. So, if you want to pass resolution twenty-five dash zero seven, that would be to set the hearing.
I make a motion that we pass resolution twenty-five dash zero seven. For the hearing next council meeting.
Next council meeting?
Yep.
Which would be May nineteenth. Is that good?
It is.
Nope.
We may do three days. If we can personally serve, otherwise we're. We can. We're supposed to publish, so that would be up to me. If we get our, if we get it served personally, then.
And we can. No problem with that?
Just getting that done.
Get it served personally? Okay. We're ready. Right here.
You meant again from the time he's already done it, or some notice of hearing? Okay, I got you, I got you.
So we have a motion by, that was a motion right now. We have a motion by Neil Oglesby to move forward with resolution twenty-five dash zero seven, which would be setting the hearing for eleven oh nine Short for May nineteenth at six P M.
Second.
We have a second by Chastity Reynolds, all in favor? Any opposed?
What about with the Main Street house?
Still on that. Nothing so far. All right, um, Melissa Rhodes. So, I want to give a brief update too, I know not, not everybody maybe has been to a meeting since, but, uh, months ago, probably back in the false time, we implemented a new, uh, procedure where people on the council have a five minutes, and we have a clock, and it's really just for efficiency, so we won't interrupt and give you your five minutes, that way everyone has a, has a fair turn at, at, uh, the code.
Okay. Um, I'm only here for a couple of things, um, this evening. We're working with, um, Jacob Bridges on his building, and we are in the process of applying for a brownfield. That's where they're gonna come in and do the assessment for any lead, um, asbestos, that one point in time that was a gas station, so if there's any contamination in the ground, they would do that. Um, in order to do that with that application, we need a letter from the city council that says, yes, um, we support this assessment, this endeavor. Um, and then I would like another one, because as representative of Kansas, um, Southeast Kansas Rural Development Association, um, we like to guarantee that our grants that we write are gonna be accepted. So I would like to send up a letter of support for Jacob, um, Bridges, um, because after, right after, I mean, like, within the same week that we do the brownfield application, we will also be submitting a grant for the E-Hill, which is an emergency, historic economic asset lifeline grant, that will take care of some roof and HVAC and electrical and plumbing. Um, so we need a letter of support for that as well, and then, like I said, last time I was here, later on we'll come in and ask for, um, your assistance on the CDBG, um, for the commercial rehab on that.
Okay, so, Dorit, have you heard last meeting? Um, but this is a private business, this is a small business. And all we're doing is showing our support. City wouldn't be on the hook for anything at any time.
Nothing. All, even in the CDBG, you would not be on the hook for anything. It's just that we, as a nonprofit, cannot apply for that. We can, we have to be the one that applies to the E-Hill, because you have to go through a, um, grant administrator, and that's what we do.
Okay.
Um, but the CDBG has to be sponsored by a city or a county. But you would be on the hook for no money there either, because he already has that match money, didn't he?
Okay. And you, you also said, just to clarify, that would it hinder us from any possibility of future work?
No, because I think maybe on our conversation that we have had, and, and I said, this is the year, if you're gonna do a firetruck, this is the year to do a firetruck, might not come up again for fifteen, twenty years. And that would not, a CDBG for him would not, um, MP that. Um, if you go after CDBG for anything, um, the very first thing you need to do is, um, have a public hearing and advertise that, and keep all of that information. There's a very important timeline that goes with that, that we have to watch, because one day off of that timeline would toss your grant application.
Okay.
So when you get that, when you go in that direction, give us a call so we can watch that, make sure within that.
So, you're requesting two separate letters, one basically, uh, letter in support of the.
The brownfield assessment.
Okay, assessment, and then another in just support of him.
Just support of his, um, E-Hill application. E, small, lowercase E, capital H E A L.
You guys in support of doing that?
I don't mind, I mean, I. Hard to say yes on the support letter when we can't read it either, but I mean, I don't have a problem supporting his endeavors.
Right, when, when do you need the light?
Um, the brownfield, we would love to have as soon as possible. That can be emailed to us, because we want to get that started. Um, that's about a three-week process, um, once they get the application, and then they make the arrangements with Jacob to get out here. We've already got his access letter to the property for them to come on, but that's a three-week. From the time they get the application to, 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 to do the assessment and giving you a report, and at the same time, we will be applying for that E-Hill, because the money that's spent, that the state spends on that brownfield will be his match for his E-Hill.
We're all about spending everyone else's money. Yeah.
I think we're all in for it.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want it to bottle like the last thing, the letter of support, and it end up being money.
No, this letter of support, there's no, there's no money. When I come to ask you for money, I'll be really blunt. Say, this is what you need.
I, I understand, but.
Have you guys been involved with, um, Patterson Family Foundation at all?
So, I, I personally have, just because I'm part of the Cherokee County Eco, Economic Development Committee, and so they, yeah.
When you start, when you guys start looking for something, um, firetruck or whatever, that's where I would go to get my match. And that, they, that's on a timeline now as well, and those letters of intent open up again in July. They closed, they just recently closed.
Okay. So, if you guys are okay with the two separate letters of support, um.
Yeah, you said you're, you're writing them, so, yeah, I mean, at that point. Yeah.
Okay with that?
Okay with that.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion. Letter of support for the brownfield and the E-Hill.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby, uh, to provide the li- the two letters of support, one for the brownfield and one for the E-Hill application.
Thank you, and you can email.
Second by Jamie Jackson, all in favor? Any opposed?
Uh, did you get her card? Is it in Office of Labor?
Okay, you have to just email that to me.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much.
Del Helwig.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Living the dream. I got some info for you guys. So, uh, just to start out, a couple of, several months ago at the beginning of the year, we did some strategic planning, uh, with economic development tonight, I'll probably represent that on later, but, uh, we did some strategic planning across the county. We did three of those, one Columbus, Baxter, and then Galena was the last one. Kudos to you guys, Galena was the largest participating one. So we took those, we asked three questions on that. Uh, what does success look like for your community? Uh, what are some positives in your community, and then the last one, what barriers are keeping you from success? And so those were the same, we asked only those three questions in every community. Uh, we got lots and lots of answers. Um, this is a compiled report. The first part is the countywide data, we, we combined all three locations into one, and that's the countywide, and then as you look to the back of that, uh, Galena has, we just compiled the answers that we collected here in Galena. So, um, kind of interesting information, I won't say there's nothing we didn't know, just kind of, uh, way I kind of looked at it though, was some things that we maybe had some holes that slipped through. So I just wanted to kind of touch on some of that, you guys can take that home and go to sleep tonight reading that, which would be great. But, uh, one of the points that we found in all communities, especially in Galena around the county, was we have very tight-knit, very supportive communities in every, every town. So, uh, there's some programs like NRP, uh, in, in Neighborhood Revitalization Program that is working really, really well, and some others, and the schools are highly valued in every community. You guys have a great school here in Galena. But then there's also some key things to work on as barriers to being successful. One of those is kind of interesting, education's highly valued, but it's also maybe one of the negatives in the communities too, is employer stock, individuals may be not work-ready. And I'll preface this by saying, these are people's opinions in the survey. So whether it's reality or perception, this was, this was a survey result that we took. Uh, the other one was, uh, brain drain. So kids are great, uh, students are great, but they're leaving and not staying. And you guys all know that population has decreased by about one percent a year. So, what do we gotta do to work on that? Uh, transportation is an issue, it's always has been. One of the things that came out in Galena though, is you guys do not have a chamber, uh, here. You guys are, you know, trying or working with it. Uh, maybe there's some things we can do in the future there through economic development, we can get into that later, but I don't have time tonight. Uh, we can work on that. But the two things that were kind of go hand in hand is, the people wanted to be successful in Galena, was increased food traffic combined local, and fixing and filling vacant bu- buildings. So those were kind of the key takeaways, and we can go into some more questions if you have it. But I'm gonna lead that into, in the back of that paperclip deal, there is a, uh, three-page deal on the Main Street program. Cherokee County is one of, I think, seven counties chosen for a pilot program to do a Main Street program countywide, not just in a town. Mostly it's in a town, like Shenute, I think, is the closest one, and part of that problem with the Main Street programs, you gotta have paid staff to implement the program, so, and if you're in a city. Through the pilot program, they're allowing economic development to be that paid staff. So, uh, that's kind of cool. There is a two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollar a year fee for any community that wants to be a part of that, so Galena would have, if they want to participate, would do that. But it also takes, uh, people in the community can go to their trainings, there's a lot of technical assistance. The other thing is, uh, that there's also some extra grant opportunities. Uh, one of those would be the rooms deal, where you have a business on the bottom on a Main Street, but then they can fix up the top for apartments. That's just one of the grants, but you have to be a Main Street community to even apply for that. So, there's some money available, I wanted to bring that forward to you. Uh, they finally got the thing kicked off for the Main Street program on the county, so, um, you guys want to look through there, you have any questions. Uh, somebody does have to attend seventy-five percent of the meetings, they have quarterly meetings from the community, and that doesn't have to be the same person every time, it just has to be somebody from the community. It could be the city clerk. Look.
Where are the meetings?
They're at various places. Uh, Emporia seems to be one, I, I think probably maybe Topeka or something, so there would be a little travel cost for whoever's going. Uh, it could be a, a business owner downtown. It does not have to be the same person, just somebody from the community attend seventy-five percent. There's online trainings. Um, I think it's just a two-year pilot program, so if it don't work, we're out in December twenty-sixth, if it works, we can continue that, so. Um, if you have any questions, I tried to keep that as short as I could, those were the highlights, but I'd be glad to answer any questions, or if you guys have any thoughts. Glad to go forward with that.
So this Main Street deal, um, provides trainings and some grant opportunities.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll expand a little bit more on the Main Street program. They have basically four pillars on the Main Street programs they're working through. It's transforma- transformation through economic vitality, trying to make viable businesses downtown. Uh, the design, which Galena's already ahead of the game on that, with your design, uh, downtown, promotion through marketing, and then organization coming together with a plan. So one of the things we do it, one of the things is kind of hurry it, we want to do it to kind of move forward with it, we want to bring somebody down from Topeka that will do a community assessment, a little different than what we did on the strategic planning, but they will assess the community and then try to help us formulate a plan to move forward and grow it. So, personally, I think two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars is pretty cheap to try a program to see if it'll work, uh, but Holly Johnson is working with me in the office, will be, um, moving forward with that project.
I love it. It's quite a good program.
On the, um, on the grants, do individual businesses can apply for those, or is that through the city?
No, a lot of those will be through the businesses itself. It depends on the grant. Some grants, as you can attest to, are only through five oh one C threes or government organizations, others are directly to the business. Um, it just depends on the grants.
I like it. I'm with him for two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, I don't think it could hurt anything. What do you guys think?
No, I mean, we've talked a little bit in eco devos before, and my comment is basically fairly steadfast to the saying is, that's a, uh, very cheap investment to help the businesses inside your community. I don't think you really have to vote on that, do we?
Um, I, I mean, yeah, we gotta sign a letter.
And on that, I just need, Ashley, I mean, you can sign, Tracy can email it to me, whoever gave it to me tonight or what. Want to make sure you're comfortable with it, that's why I'm here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I like it. Everyone, do we need something to support an agreement on info?
I mean, I'll make a motion and we'll move forward with it.
Okay. Is that good?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby to move forward with the, uh, Kansas Main Street program. Jamie was that second? Second by Jamie Jackson, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Do you want me to sign this paper, or do you have it?
Yeah, you can sign that one, that's fine. Same topics for everyone could. And if you guys have any questions, like I said, read through that, uh, community assessment that we did, if you have any questions, that's hopefully gonna drive what our office does in the future. Um, Neil gets to sit in another meeting tomorrow night, as we're gonna tear that apart a little bit closer.
So there have been some.
Thank you.
Conversations sometimes asked about what eco, what Cherokee County Economic Development actually does, and this is, I'm, I'm gonna have to actually be truthful on this one, this is actually one of the, uh, things that I've been waiting to see. So I was pretty excited whenever Dale started bringing it up, you know, it seemed like that when they look at that different parts of the county, it gets a little more attention, and this one's one of those that's clearly countywide, so, you know, I think it's a good step forward for the whole county.
Yeah.
For sure.
Thank you, guys. I'll be around for any questions needed.
Brian Haynes. So I think, on the agenda it has that I have the block party also, but I think it's the same block party we're talking about.
Yes, yes it is.
So, I'll kind of let you take the lead, you probably have more information than I do. So I brought this up last meeting, I'm not trying to steal Brian's thunder, but I brought it up last meeting, gave you, I had, had the date, uh, it was a evening, one night in June, um, and we had asked us for the gentleman, said he'd come up. Well, he, with the schedule, he couldn't come up, but he directed me to Brian and said that Brian, um, could give information, so, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's.
Five minutes, Brian.
Okay. All right, um, uh, the, the block party, um, is for the circuit, which is a drag and drag event that, uh, starts in Tulsa, goes to Mo坎, goes back to Tulsa. Um, we've been a stop in Galena a couple of years now, stopping at Gearhead, uh, and, um, they, uh, have to have checkpoints on their drive, and, um, Aaron is, uh, the checkpoint for Friday. My shop is the checkpoint for Saturday. So basically, they're gonna be coming through two times during, uh, this event. And, uh, on that Friday, they're looking for a, a place that everybody can kind of have a block party, hang out, things like that, looking to, uh, do that in the park downtown, um, blocking off, uh, Sixth Street to Fourth Street. The block party would be from four to nine, but we would need about an hour to set up prior, and then probably an hour to break down. Um, there is over two-hundred plus cars that, that we're gonna have, a lot of them have trailers, then a little, little trailers and stuff on them. Um, so I don't know if we would want to have the possibility of expanding farther if, if it gets too congested and, and not enough room, um, but they're really looking for the two blocks from Sixth to Fourth. Would, would you agree?
Yeah, excuse me, yes. Um, if I could just add, add something onto that. My previous life, I was an analyst, so let's look at it analytically. They love our town. You got two-hundred registered cars, roughly, two people per car. They have family members that are not traveling with them. They see that we have Totater, they see that we have Doc, they see other things in our community. There's other people that are traveling with them on this event. We have a huge ripple effect. I threw some numbers to it, I did not, I sent it to Michael Marx, I did not print it, but our lingering effect from them coming through and loving our town was about ten thousand dollars. When you look at that, they're gonna come in, they're gonna get gas, they're gonna buy a souvenir, they're gonna buy something at Meat Toritos or a Kix Bar and Grill, they're gonna tell their cousin to bring their kids back because we have Mater here. So, I love the fact that they love our town, and I think we should really try to embrace them, because they have a good economic effect and a chance for us to really shine positively to the group of people.
I don't think for Sixth to Fourth, is there probably any businesses, I mean, I don't really have a part.
Meat Torito, what time do you guys close?
Five, but we would be more happy to stay open.
During that time? Yeah, we could pub, I mean, they could probably publish out on the marketing stuff that, that you guys do too?
Yes.
Okay, so, Friday, June twenty-seventh. Uh, so really three p.m. to ten p.m. for the road, for the road.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we would need for people that aren't aware a part of this, still some form of, if you're traveling sixty-six from Belgium, you don't know what this block party is, you wanna still try to stay on it. So, we wanna still guide them on one of the opposing streets so they would continue on their route. So, we would need some form of signage to keep people on sixty-six too.
Do we have that?
Just detour.
Detour.
Yeah, just simple detour on sixty-six, detour. But we just wanna make sure we get that out for people. But ideally, heck, if you're from Belgium, come join a block party for the cars.
Well, that's what I was thinking, it's probably
You know, we could, we could suck them into that, that'd be even better, you know?
And, and that is part of why we're wanting to get this all okay, because we're wanting to bring in more than just the circuit. We're wanting to really expand it out to the car clubs and
Sure.
and, um, a lot more than just, we want it for the community, not just
Yeah.
the, the drag and drive guys.
And, and this is just one day thing, or is it all weekend?
It, it is all weekend, but, but the block party would just be for the Friday.
The twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
The twenty-eighth, there'll actually be, uh, checkpoint down at my place, uh, down on Second and Main.
Okay.
And, um, that, we don't need to block anything off for that.
And is that just all day? They can stop by?
So, basically, what they do is, they'll start off in Tulsa, they do a tech inspection. Their car has to pass, okay, you're safe to drive it. Then they do one or two passes on the Tulsa Speedway. Then they've got their designated route with different checkpoints to get here. And then my station is a checkpoint, which I believe they have to get a picture of their car in front of it. Then they would do the block party, stay the night wherever they're staying the night, go to Mo can. They have to make the tech inspection and passes down Mo can, and then they would come through for another checkpoint. So, we have an opportunity to get them in on Friday, Friday night and Saturday.
Well, on Saturday afternoon, evening is our, um, Fourth of July. He's gone at the city park, at Schwartz Park. So, if we could get that out there too, maybe they'll just stick around for all day stuff. So, really, we just need a motion to close the road, if, if that's what come forward with you.
Are we gonna close Fourth to Sixth, or Fourth to Seventh, or what?
Fourth to Sixth.
Fourth to Sixth.
But you may need more.
Well, it would be towards
You wanna go north and still
Yeah, it would be, it would be up more towards Second Street.
The more we go north, the more we're gonna hurt Meat Toritos on Friday.
You're already past them.
You're already past them. Yeah, 'cause that's the worst, yeah.
It would be Graves' then.
Or go all the way there.
But that would just be if, if there's no room for, you know, 'cause they kinda come, come and go a little bit. You know, they'll have their checkpoint and, um, you know, we hope that they all stay. We hope all two hundred, and we end up all the way down the road. But people going across the street and things like that, that's where the, the couple blocks, 'cause it's more where everything's gonna, gonna happen. But there would be parking probably all the way down to, to my place.
Okay.
Um, is, is the plan, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Is that a motion, James?
Yeah, that's a motion.
So, we have a motion by Jamie Jackson to, uh, move forward with the road closure on Friday, June twenty-seventh. It will be from three p.m. to ten p.m. Uh, Fourth Street to Sixth Street. Second by Chastity Reynolds, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Now, would those bathrooms be open then also for, um, usage?
Ask the boss.
Hey, you're making all the requests, your clock's
Yep. All right, well, thank you all very much.
And I, I wasn't here last time, and I wanna thank two of the members who did when this was brought up. They mentioned the, the businesses and the effects, so I appreciate the giving consideration for that.
Sounds like a fun time.
Everybody, please come down and check it out, for sure.
All right, Enterprise, I know that's Chief Allison, you gonna head that up?
Yes. Um, so I know I've been, I've mentioned to the council several times on our vehicle situation. And with our, our current fleet, when I came in, like, right now, if you take our, the average of our six to seven cars that are, are being used, we're around ninety-seven thousand miles on each. It is kinda the average of the patrol unit. So, we actually had one guy break down and transport the other day in the middle of the transport. So, in my opinion, uh, looking at the current budget, where, where we're at, the best thing after doing my, my research on, like, what's, how to be, what can be the quickest fixes? We gotta get it fixed. I mean, there's just not, it's not really an option unless we're gonna be responding on foot. So, I've, I've done, done some homework, checked on some prices, and I think the best program going forward, Ken has been working with me from Enterprise, and I'm gonna let him kinda tell you what me and him have come to that is something that stays within my current budget right now. Um, which would allow us to get, uh, you know, my goal was to get three cars up and go in, in the next, you know, three to six months. So, the only way that we can do that mathematically without spending a ton of money, 'cause right now I have thirty-five thousand in there, um, I can't even buy one patrol car for, for that. So, this program, Ken knows our budget, knows where we're at, is willing to work with us and get us the, the needs that we need to, to, to keep going. So, I'll let him kind of explain how it works and that part of the budget.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you so, so much for having me tonight. Um, before I dive in, just really wanted to thank, uh, Chief and Josh for all the time and effort that they've put in over the past few months here and working with me. Uh, from an agenda standpoint, I just wanted to quickly roll through a few core areas of our program, um, some high-level stuff, and then get right into the weeds of the analytics that we put together. So, first and foremost, we own the same company as Enterprise Mobility. You probably know about us from our rental car division. On my side, the fleet management side, we essentially leverage that infrastructure. We've got a whole bunch of tools, resources, people all throughout the country, and we leverage that to help entities like yours with what we consider small to medium-sized fleets, save money and operate more efficiently and effectively. I'm out of the Kansas City office. My role is, um, really getting the partnerships established, so working with the team, figuring out what pieces of our program would be a good fit. We do have the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Award that you can piggyback off, um, designing and customizing the vehicle strategy, the financial structure, um, contracts, getting, getting the partnership started. From there, I have local client strategy managers that would take over for me from a strategic standpoint, and they would come down about four, three, three per year, um, and analyze, okay, over the last budget year, what did we do financially, operationally, what have we have done better? Second, third, fourth meetings, really forecasting out the next twelve to twenty-four months of what your vehicle needs are. So, core piece from a revolve perspective is that we wanna partnership and a relationship, and we wanna be here with you at, on a regular basis to work with the team, um, not just up front, but from a moving forward standpoint. From a flexibility standpoint, every entity partners with us a little bit different. Um, so to give you an example of this, on my way down, I came through City of Pittsburgh, Cherokee County, Crawford County, Lenexa, Prairie Village, Leewood. With these entities, they only use us for what I consider the vehicle side. Purchasing, upfitting, funding of some sort, and resale. Um, few other entities, Monette on the Missouri side, Carl Junction, Lake of the Ozarks, Pittsburgh School District, CDL, they use us for that vehicle side, but they also use us for maintenance, for fuel, for telematics, so. Each of those different programs are customized around your entity, and police is gonna look a little bit different than public works. So, extreme, extremely flexible in how we implement the structure there. Same goes for the vehicle strategy. Um, I partner with a couple similar entities from a size standpoint, Hillsborough and Lyons, Kansas. About twenty-five, thirty vehicles in the fleet. We rotated out all of their vehicles up front, got really aggressive. City of Salina, we did a three-year implementation to implement the fleet. Um, Pittsburgh, we're doing a five-year implementation. So, that, as Chief, Chief mentioned, will work with you and analyze the budget year in, year out, bring budget recommendations, vehicle recommendations, and really, that's our core philosophy, is help, helping you getting and in out of the vehicles at the right time. That leads us into the budget impact scenario, which is essentially the, the biggest area of opportunity in the government space. As Chief mentioned, he's got thirty-five thousand dollars, and it's not gonna get one vehicle these days. And from that standpoint, we have an equity lease program that most of our government entities, if not all of our government entities here in, um, the state of Kansas are leveraging. And essentially, this is a bank financed down to a remaining balance, and then when we sell that vehicle, you get the equity. So, if we take, uh, it, really the way, uh, from a philosophy standpoint, we can buy these vehicles very well with our relationships with the manufacturers, your government incentives, very strong buying power. Fairly low mileage pattern, you guys are putting on about ten dollars a mile per year. Enterprise sells more vehicles on the back end than anyone. We sell one to two million used vehicles every year, so you get to capitalize on that infrastructure. So, with the equity lease, you're just paying for the portion that you're going to use for X amount of time, leveraging the buying power and the resale abilities, and then from there, operational expenses with our maintenance and fuel will certainly come down. Um, but that's essentially the philosophy and what most of our government entities are leveraging. I'm not gonna get too in the weeds. I know we're kinda right there on, from a time perspective. Um, but from an acquisition perspective, we can essentially help you acquire the vehicles in any way. Um, we've got our used inventory, we have our dealer inventory, we've got the largest dealer network in the country. We have aftermarket pools of vehicles, aftermarket vendors. Um, but about ninety-five percent of our vehicles are ordered direct from the manufacturers. We've got every make, every model, so we sit down as we have with both divisions so far. We spec these vehicles out exactly as you need them, get them delivered to the aftermarket vendor, get them outfitted, and then deliver to you ready to go. We'll pick those vehicles up, sell the age units, whether they're client-owned vehicles or an enterprise vehicle down the road, we'll sell them on your behalf. Um, on average, we're getting about ten percent above auction value, so we sell vehicles as well. But the most important piece is that my team's coming out on an annual basis. Next year, the tariffs come into play, or whatever it be. Every single year, we're analyzing the, the current market conditions and when to get in and out of these vehicles. From a, I, I'll, I'll wrap it up here, but from a
Your department.
Okay. Um, so, with, with those two pieces, again, um, from a financial standpoint, um, we've got really three different ways that you can pay for the vehicles. We have a self-fund model that essentially allows you to pay cash for the vehicles. We have a net lease model, which is a traditional lease that I do not recommend to you guys. There's fees, there's penalties, there's over mileage, the, kind of a traditional type lease. With our equity lease, again, it's a simply a bank finance to a remaining balance, and when we sell that vehicle, you get the equity. Most of my clients are putting that equity back into an equipment reserve fund or a fleet replacement fund and leveraging that equity from a moving forward standpoint with that department or entity wide to help set, offset our costs from a moving forward standpoint. With that equity lease model, there is no fees for wear and tear, over mileage, early termination. It's all based around the vehicle. So, if we sell that, if we're planning a thirty-six month term and twelve months in, the resale market's really strong, we can profit off that vehicle as we have in, over the past five years in many scenarios. We can get out early. If we hit a recession, vehicle market goes down, we can extend out longer. So, just an extreme amount of flexibility, and again, that's why my team's here on a regular basis. Covered a tremendous amount there in five minutes. Um, a, any questions on the acquisition, funding, upfitting, resale piece?
What was the first type of lease that you didn't recommend?
A net lease.
Net lease.
Yes.
What is that?
So, with a net lease, it's a lower monthly payment, but we keep the equity when the vehicle is sold. So, kind of a traditional type lease. And, and with that, the reason, primary reason I don't recommend it is because there's, you know, if we plan for ten thousand miles and Chief puts on twenty thousand miles, there's penalties. If Chief gets in an accident or door dings or whatever, whatever else, there, so there's penalties and fees. With the equity lease, there's no fees whatsoever.
So, how would that work, like wrecks or door dings and things like that?
So, all of it's based around the equity of the vehicle. So, if we keep it really nice, it's gonna sell for more. We beat the heck out of it, it's gonna sell for less. Same with the mileage. We put on higher mileage, it's gonna sell for less, lower mileage, it's gonna sell for more.
And it goes on our share interest.
Yeah, it's essentially a lease purchase, so it's, like, we buy all of our, instead of just renting it or like a traditional And I, and I will tell you guys, like, I have looked at, uh, this is what Cherokee County's using, this is what the people, it's known and proven, like, I didn't just pull him out because I've done my homework. It's gonna, like, to buy, I looked at it like, well, let's just look at buying it. And you're talking about by outfitting, just say a Dodge Durango, which is kinda, kinda what we have now. You're looking at a cost of, for one vehicle at seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, if we buy them, like, in the past, I know some have been purchased to, like, Kansas Auto Patrol, and they've come in at fifty or sixty thousand miles on it. For any of you people who have bought cars and know about, the warranty leaves at thirty-six thousand. Now, here we are, stuck with a car who, even though you know they've been driven hard. This way, we're getting new vehicles coming in, um, and like, everybody that's using it, but I know that I could bet personally, I've made the phone calls, and I think if we want to get to where we need to be, this is the way, I mean, the only way we can really make it.
Or at least coming completely outfitted.
Yes. This is, and I do, you know, they could, they'll be all the way down to the stripe package when we, and it's a turn, they, they basically drop them off on our lot and take whatever ones we want to, to take back and, and use towards the equity, you know, towards the payment. And so, we can just pretty much get, we have cars sitting out there with a hundred and fifty-six thousand miles on them that are just, you know. The, the other day, I, one, they were, we were getting one fixed, and it was gonna cost us like three thousand, and that's when we kinda come up with having the mechanic at, at the works, go like, you know, this is, this way, we're having new vehicles, new stuff, we can, I mean, obviously, stuff to go on a new car, but at least you got warranty and, and stuff.
And it's typically less. You're right, we try, I mean, Neil probably remembers, I know Josh does. We tried just since I've been involved, all different ways on police vehicle, vehicles, how to do, and how to get off, use of the highway patrol. I think Purple Wave, maybe we've got some off there before, and they're way cheaper, um, especially the auction sites. I remember Chief Charles would be on auction sites trying to get him. I think once we got a car for like ten thousand dollars, and it, I, about, we put twenty thousand into that car in two months, you know, just in that amount of time. Um, so we've kinda done it both ways, and this does seem
I, I really feel like this is the best for the city and moving forward and, you know, for the citizens here. Like I said, we're breaking down the weight of cars, we're not doing anybody any good. And just to go out there and not know if your car's even gonna start for the shift, I mean, we're, we're kind of a little behind. I feel like this catches us up toward where we need to be.
Is this like a monthly fee or
No, it's, well, it can, it
Yes, it, it is, it comes out monthly, um, i- if you're using the equity lease model. Um, but we're analyzing it when we do our budget preparations, we're typically analyzing it for the full budget span. Um, and we've, I've got that all prepared. Um, Chief has thirty-five thousand dollars for, for this budget year. Um, and one of the benefits with the, with any of the models is you don't start paying, through our Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Award, you don't start paying until after the vehicle's delivered. So, if we ordered a vehicle today, which we, we're, we're looking at different solutions on how to acquire the vehicle, but if we order it today and it comes in, you know, two months before your budget year is over, you don't start paying until that point in time, and that's fully equipped. So, we send it to the aftermarket vendor, whatever aftermarket vendor the team elects, we, we, we get that vehicle outfitted and then to you. So, if there's only two months of payments, then we have those two months. So, we're, we're really working within the budget because thirty-five thousand dollars, you know, given the aftermarket equipment and all that, so we're gonna capitalize as much of the equipment into the lease as we need to, and then that, and kind of analyze it from when your budget, when the, when the monthly payments would start to accommodate that thirty-five thousand dollars. So, there's three vehicles, there's two Durangos and a Silverado fifteen hundred, and then we looked at four different vehicles on the, four, five different vehicles on the public work side. Um, and we also analyze, once we deliver those vehicles, if we were to sell off the client-owned vehicles that you guys are currently operating, Chief doesn't have a ton of equity, as you mentioned, a lot of those are a hundred fifty thousand miles plus. But there's about six grand in equity on, on Chief's side, and there's about sixty-two thousand for, for the eight vehicles on the public work side. Again, we kinda did more of a, me and Josh put together more of a wish list type scenario, so whatever you all land on from that perspective. But if we were to do those eight vehicles, there's sixty-two thousand. From a, um, from a aftermarket standpoint, there's thirty-eight thousand dollars if we, we're, we're adjusting it here and there, but, um, for Chief's, there's about thirty thousand dollars, thirty-eight thousand dollars in aftermarket. Again, we'll capitalize as much in the lease as we need to. And then if that was completely filled out, there was twenty-eight thousand dollars of payments for those three vehicles for a full twelve-month span, so next budget year would be twenty-eight thousand. So
It's under budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, a- again, that's where, you know, if we have that equipment reserve fund, we get to leverage that six thousand dollars as well, which isn't a lot, but it's going towards it. Correct, and same for the, um, sixty-two thousand on Josh's side. You know, let's say we order them and they deliver first year, first day of next budget year, then you would have the full twelve-month span, which would come out to seventy-nine thousand, but we would have forty-seven thousand dollars in equity, so fifteen thousand dollars ballpark and, um, additional funds to go towards that total budget, bringing us to roughly sixty-five thousand dollars for those full twelve-month span for eight trucks on Josh's side, fully equipped. So, a lot of numbers I'm throwing at you there, but that's the type of analysis that we're ru- we're running and working with you to figure out, okay, what is in the budget, you know? And then the, the other piece of this is, we're really just talking capital budget right now. The operating budget, to your point, a lot of times in the government space, there's an endless operating budget as our maintenance and fuel, we have to fix that truck, so Chief can do the job, or Josh can do, do his job, right? So, from that standpoint, you're going to see a massive reduction, and we ran the analytics, and from overall, with the thirty vehicles that are in operation, roughly, there's a twenty thousand dollar savings opportunity, but that's going from a fifteen to a four-year average cycle pattern. So, right now, you guys are running your vehicles in for about fifteen years on average, and through this model, there's a, a very conservative savings opportunity of twenty thousand dollars, and we're running a four-year, four-year model. Retention, recruiting, safety, image, downtime, all those different things that come with a newer, safer, more efficient formula.
So, what is the term of the lease? You said that can be negotiated?
Yes, and, and so, Chief, we've got yours set up at sixty months. I've got all of it right here, but sixty months, fifteen thousand miles. Um, a- and on Josh's side, we've got him set at sixty month, ten, sixty months, ten thousand Um, a- and on Josh's side, we've got him set at sixty month, ten, sixty months, ten thousand miles. Now, that can, you know, Josh can go five thousand, he can go fifteen thousand, Chief can go thirty thousand, we can adjust this however we need, but just based on averages that we analyze, conservative averages, that was the, the mileage, so we have him set at sixty months, but I'm very confident on Josh's side, and I did that primarily to get the lowest, uh, lowest budget possible, that that's our lowest term that will go from a depreciation standpoint, but my team will be here on a regular basis analyzing. And next year, we might come out on the Chevy Colorado, on that truck and say, hey, after twelve months, we're in an equity position, we're in a profitable position. Again, government incentives, resale abilities, low mileage patterns, and we might recommend you get out of that truck after twelve months. Chief's side, we got more equipment, so, so we're probably not gonna do that, but on that Silverado fifteen hundred, we might say twenty-four months, thirty-six months. So every year, my team's gonna come out and do an annual review, bring that to you all, and then from a quarterly standpoint, we're gonna make those recommendations as we go. I, I want to be clear, you guys are always in full control of what happens, right? So if you, if, if we're at sixty months and you want to get out in twelve months, you can do so. If we're at twelve months and we're telling you to get out in twelve months and you don't want to go sixty months, you can do so.
The mileage and term is really just affecting the equity and the equity affects the payment, so those are all variables. There are vehicles, we, we own them, we're just paying lease.
Correct.
So how soon we get out of them determines how much they're worth at the end.
Yeah, or at any given point.
That always changes the whole equation.
And, and if you owe, you know, if we, we're funding that vehicle down and you're at twenty thousand dollars, and we can sell for thirty-five after thirty-six months, we're gonna make that recommendation, you take that fifteen thousand dollars in equity, we put it towards the next vehicle, we reduce our costs moving forward, you got a brand new vehicle in operation.
Right, right, yeah. I know the shirts up went to that a few years ago, um, and I know it's been a great deal.
Red and Bridge is doing it too.
Are they, yeah.
Yeah, partner with all those folks.
I said, I, I would like to give it for me to move forward with it, like, so I feel like I've done the backside, I've been working on this for like two months.
Yeah.
Three months.
Three cars.
Three cars, yeah. Two Durangos and a pickup.
And I know even back when Chief Charles was here, uh, vetting potential applicants, uh, that was something, and, and when they would leave, not stick around vehicles and equipment was always one thing that was brought up, always, basically locked there.
I think we, I think he brought one up before, but it was not the equity lease, it was the other name.
It was different, yeah, it was-
There are some other ones out there, and like I said, I, I was terrible.
It was not beneficial at all, and that was prior to like the county moving toward it, it was, it's been a handful of years ago, but.
Someone asked the big question, three of them is going to be, how much a month for his?
So from an annual standpoint, that'd be, if we build out the aftermarket equipment, the monthly pay, monthly payments would equate to twenty-eight thousand dollars from a twelve month span.
Yearly.
Year, yearly.
Yes, annually, yeah, so, so every year, you'd spend twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, that's putting all equipment in the car.
No.
That's us, us handling it, but we would-
Then, just so you guys know, like one Durango, like, is around, for me to get all the license stuff, you're looking at almost twenty car.
Yeah.
Just to get, that's the equipment, that's the cage, that's the light siren, that's not, like, the vehicle itself is, you know, forty, I mean, I mean, you're-
The, the aftermarket equipment would be thirty-eight thousand for those three vehicles, if we build that out upfront, so that would come out upfront, and that's why I said we're, we'll analyze whatever's in the budget. If we can use thirty thousand and capitalize it at eight thousand and leverage the six thousand and the five thousand to get us through the rest of the year from a budget standpoint, then next year, you would have twelve monthly payments that would come out to a total of twenty-eight thousand. On Josh's side, there's sixty-two thousand dollars in equity, forty-seven thousand build out, and then seventy-nine thousand for the eight vehicles. And from that standpoint, again, whatever you guys a- elect to do it, in, in upfront or at any given point, um, com- completely your decision. My one request and one ask that I, that I have is, just from a partnership standpoint, I would really love if Josh's side could be involved, whether it's one vehicles, eight vehicles, whatever that number is. And, and the reason that is from a partnership standpoint, is many of the departments involved as possible so that they can feel this and see this and work with us from a, from an ongoing standpoint.
I'd like to keep them separate for this, uh, cause I don't know what eight vehicles he wants to get rid of. I understand the, the cars here, it needs to be upgraded, but I don't understand anything about the trucks, I haven't heard a word about any of them getting old, high mileage or anything. The one past my house that day, it looked perfectly good to me.
Yeah.
It's probably just-
We have, no, it's a single cab.
We do have some, some good trucks, but that's why our equity is so much higher than the police department, so you start taking and keeping the good ones and then you don't have equity to trade in, so.
But you're also not paying anything.
So the average age is two thousand, for the, for the eight vehicles that we looked at on Josh's side, the average age was two thousand and twelve, which is thirteen, fourteen years old from a, from a model standpoint, and I, I'll give you an example, on their side, it's a little bit different, and with, with the public works, from bridge type vehicles, administration type vehicles, a lot of times it's fire, civilian type models, we can rotate those out a lot quicker because they don't, they're not a pursuit type vehicle. So a lot of times, I get, I do the infi government, which is Kansas, why not county up in Kansas City? Oh, a lot of my entities have done this, but we would literally rotate them at twelve months. So we buy and have two-fifties, in what we're, we're looking at for Josh, and we would, you know, back in twenty-twenty, I was buying it for thirty-two thousand, I would fund it from thirty-two to, to twenty-five thousand dollars for that equity lease. So their total budget that year was seven thousand dollars. Well, I picked that up and I would sell for about fifty thousand dollars and write it to check for twenty-five, and the next truck, then they have a zero dollar budget for that entire department, and I sold their trucks on the front end, and they had a zero dollar budget on the front end there too. I'm not saying that's the case, we're not rotating our trucks out at twelve months right now, but the government incentives are turning back up, the resale market's going like this. So from that standpoint, there's a huge savings opportunity to get out of, out of those trucks at the right time and capitalize on our resale market, back to the general public, back to our wholesale buyers, and there's more of a, a retail type model when we sell those trucks, similar to the Silverado fifteen hundred that we're looking at there. Now, on Chief's side, you're gonna spend outrageous amount of, on maintenance a- a- and, and parts and labor and all those different pieces because they're pursuit type vehicles, right? And they can't really do their job, I mean, we very rarely run our pursuit vehicles a hundred and fifty thousand miles, we're getting out significant losses or something.
Yeah, I understand it is, but you know, if the underline breaks or something, we gotta drop all things and run to it, right?
Sure, certainly.
So would they be separate anyway, though?
So from the contract standpoint, we, that does not affect us, so if, if you guys approve the contract, there's one master equity lease agreement that we would need signed. Um, and approved, that would allow us to do business with the city as, as a whole, whether it's public works, whether it's fire, administration in general. And then what we would do is we could separate them through sub-customers, so that you could Chief could just see his stuff, Josh could just see his stuff, the bills would be separate. All of the reporting and analytics would be separate, um, so, but from that standpoint, it's all under the master agreement in general. So that's where if, if Josh has, you know, one vehicle that we could have a zero dollar budget next year, we could get started there, or you know, one vehicle that broke down that we have to do, or two vehicles, or whatever that looks like, that's, a- all I'm asking is, I would really appreciate if we could get Josh's side involved, so that, cause there, there is a huge opportunity. Like I said, the average age is two thousand and twelve for those eight trucks, and there's some that are significantly older than that.
So one agreement is for the whole city?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
But then you'd work with each separate department on any given time?
Correct, and, and, you know, we would come down and hopefully meet at, at the same, whatever that looks like, and then have, we have our Zoom meetings and everything else, so. But yes, we would keep them separate from a decision-making standpoint one hundred percent.
So all we need to decide tonight is if we want to participate in this program, is that right?
And enter into an agreement with-
Enter into an agreement.
Enterprise FM trust and allow the department heads to work within the budget to activate lease agreements, at least.
And then that would all have to come before us.
Some, some approve the budget, so if Chief can, you know, if he's got thirty-five thousand dollars, and we can work within the budget and get those three vehicles, and hopefully, you know, or you can approve those three vehicles either, either way.
And that's what they, I was explaining to Chief Allison, because he's new, he's only been here a few months, but that's what I like about our budget, is our department heads are in charge of their budget. So if we approve that Chief has six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if he needs to move some funds and say, well, you know, sorry, I can't go buy this computer software because my lease payment was higher, he's gotta figure that out, he can't, the, you know, we're, we're about the bottom line, he can't go over that six hundred and fifty, what, I mean, I just remember out there, but.
And, and that's how most of my entities do it, if you all approve fifty thousand dollars and the, the staff can work within that fifty thousand dollars, that, that's how majority of my entities do it, but again, we can customize that however we need.
So what do y'all think, what would you like to do?
And if we could just find out if this is not for us for whatever reason, there's no penalty, no?
Nope, so the, the way I explain that is, there's, there's a couple of different ways to get out of that, I just think about it as a single vehicle scenario. So if there's one vehicle on the road and it's, we're, we have a thirty-six month term, you don't like the program anymore next year, we'll pick that vehicle up, sell it on your behalf, whatever the equity is, we'll return that to you, you guys go buy another vehicle, do whatever you want to do. That, if we've got thirty vehicles like that, that's a lot, we probably wouldn't do that scenario.
But if there's no equity, I mean, you're worried.
Yeah, then it's break even, or you're negative equity or whatever it be.
Or negative equity, it doesn't say it's going to be there for that.
Correct, yes, sir, the, the option B though, which would be more likely, is if we're at thirty-six months and you owe that twenty thousand dollars, you pay off that twenty thousand dollars, I give you the title, you go, you run that thing till it's dead. Again, thirty vehicles on the road, that's a big check to write, if we've got thirty vehicles at twenty thousand on average. Realistically, what we do is we just depreciate that vehicle another two, three, four years, whatever it be, until they're all fully depreciated, and then you can run that vehicle till it's dead, do whatever you want to do. At the end of the day, we don't want our team coming down four or five times a year if you guys don't want to do business, but over these first couple of years, given we're not, you know, rotating out the entire fleet, you're not in that scenario right out of the gate, so we, it, it gives you a feeling of how this partnership works and you get to feel the relationship on a organic type approach.
So what would you like to do?
How do you feel about the finance committee looking at it?
Yeah, I mean-
And then we could take the recommendation from them and move forward from there.
If you want to do that.
Well, this has been a whole lot of information for me, you know, I know about everybody else.
It has, but it does seem like we kind of need those three cars.
I don't want to scream desperation, but the longer we wait, like I said, we're breaking down on the call system.
Hey, we have a, we already have a police commit, police department committee set for this Thursday, why don't they look at it this, or the police department committee?
Okay, that's fine.
That okay?
Yep.
And the lease agreement as a whole?
I, I've sent that to Candace, she should have that.
Yes, yeah, can we have that printed off, if we have access to that, okay. Is that okay with everybody? Yes, we're good with that? And then we'll be in touch?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that good?
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
All right. Is Miss Serena, is she in the hallway? Catherine Serena, she step out? She wasn't.
Have you seen, is there anybody out in the hall?
All right, we'll move to department heads, uh, Chief Allison.
Okay. I've just, I'm already asking for things, uh, our, I would like to, uh, move forward, um, we're down to two tasers that are working, matter, we purchased, it looked like the last time we purchased tasers was in twenty twenty-one, uh, there was some type of a grant that paid that amount off for the tasers. However, we're down, they only have a one-year, those only had a one-year warranty on them, and we're down to the last two that are working properly without spending money to get them fixed.
What was the deal, though, we got some from the county?
That's what I was wondering, was it that, was that what we got from the-
Yeah, it was something that you guys, cause it looked like you guys paid like a little bit upfront and then like it.
No, I mean, this is just six months ago or so, the county was supposed to give us some, all we had to do is buy batteries for it or something.
Did they give us the two thousand twenty-one months or the ones that-
No, our funds paid for the ones in two, in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, was that local that brought that one?
Yeah. Yeah. We're supposed to have three of them.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I remember, some, and they were fully operable and all this.
Need to replace the batteries or something like that.
Yeah.
Do we have those?
I thought I, only one, all, what we have now, what I see is there's four, two of those are working, um, properly, the other ones are not working properly.
Sounds like you didn't ever get the ones from county, you was talking about them.
Yeah.
So I mean, I can check with Henderson over there, but, um, my guess is they're giving them to us, they're probably, because the new current ones, like the X-sevens, actually, when you pull the taser out and you're at a situation, it automatically starts recording the whole situation, so you have, it's like, uh, I mean, hundred, hundred percent of the interaction, once the taser deployed, everything, it records the whole, whole process.
How much is that, a taser?
So to buy seven of the new, of the X-sevens is gonna be, you pay, they'll take the ones that we have in trade, some of those in trade. So our first year, we'd be paying, it's a total of thirty thousand dollars total, um, build over six years. And the payments are due the January of every year, and the first one would be, cause they'll take trade, so it'd be like fourteen, um, fourteen hundred or whatever it is, so. So our first year, like, in August, if we paid fourteen hundred sixty-four dollars, they sent, and this comes with everything, this comes with training, comes with everything, like to, everything for their belt, every, no, no other purchase, it comes with plenty of batteries, like you don't have to buy anything else. Um, and the contract is for six years, and it's thirty thousand or twenty-nine thousand two hundred dollars, we would pay, um, fourteen hundred sixty-four dollars in August of twenty-five, and then starting January twenty-six, it'd be five thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, or sixty-six dollars the first of every, every year, so, um.
Are these a multiple target acquisition?
Yeah, yeah, these are, these are, there's only one more after these, which are the X-tens, and then, but my officers here and the other officers that I've talked to like the X-seven model, which is, I think, probably the only better, better opportunities for us or better options for us, so. Like I said, having two is, this way, we buy seven, then all my full-time staff has them, they have their own, they don't have to worry about can't, and did somebody take their some for the, you know, so everybody has one, everybody's, and you guys know this is one step below, you know, we, this is less lethal force, which you, you need to have, I mean, it's something that we need to have, that, it's not really an option to not have this tool, because that's, we, we, I've, since I've been here, I think at least four, maybe five deployments since January.
Oh, I'm a supporter, a hundred percent, a good friend of mine would still be alive if the police had access to them.
Yeah, yeah, they're just a great tool, and like I said, I don't feel like they're even negotiable, even if we got some from county, we're, I, I would, I would think that they're gonna be, I don't think they're giving us their, their newest, newest version.
No, they weren't, no, they were used.
So, I mean, and I get it, but like I said, we, we don't want to find out when it's too late that they're not functioning, and so, um, these come with a, we got them to include a three-year full warranty on these, so we won't be stuck at the one-year kind of pay, and Axon's, there, there's no other really option for the taser right now, Axon kind of controls that market, so really, that's, if we have to give-
Will there be need to be new trainings with these or?
Yes, and it comes with the training, everything, yeah, it comes with everybody's training, comes with the training targets suit, it comes with, I mean, it's like a whole pocketful.
What was your number for here?
Five thousand five sixty-eight.
Yeah, punch it up.
I wrote it down.
Five thousand.
Does that come out of your budget, this budget or is he asking for it?
No, it, it comes out of this budget already.
Yeah, well, we had to have this, like, this was not in there, cause I think that was paid off, and so I'm gonna have to come up with the, figure out how to make the fourteen hundred work, and I'm gonna have to ask for, I mean, from here on, I mean, probably next budget, you're gonna have to ask for that, because it's, I don't see it in there anywhere.
Well, you could put that in any line.
Right, right, yeah, about me with some stuff, yeah, yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
So how much are you asking for tonight?
For-
Commitment.
It'd be a full commitment tonight.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna have to agree to a long term, it's like leasing a car, right, man, you're gonna have, at all, it's thirty thousand dollars over five years.
Yeah. Six, yeah, six years.
Six, six years. So your first year, the rest of this year is fourteen hundred and something, right?
Yeah, August twenty twenty-five, we could get the tasers coming out for one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. And then every, then at the beginning, in January, every year, it'll be five thousand for a total of twenty-nine thousand two ninety-seven thirty-four is the total. That's with the, the trade-in and a ten percent discount. So we're saving ten thousand, cause we're running out of ten thousand dollars, or excuse me, ten percent discount. I don't know, I love that script.
Yeah, I think it's a good deal.
Go ahead, mate, Robert, you're the one that spit up the good question about multiple tasers. If you've been tased once, that's enough.
You, if you've done it once, I probably don't want to do it.
Trust me, you don't want to do it again.
It's the gift that keeps giving.
And maybe, I can't confirm it anymore. I may, uh, I make a motion that we move forward with this, but, uh, Chief, do what he needs to do.
Second. We have, we have a motion by Bobla Turner to move forward with the purchase of the new X-seven, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, tasers at twenty-nine thousand two ninety-seven and thirty-four cents over the next six years. Second by Chastity Reynolds. And we'll, uh, do that with a roll call vote.
Mr. Reynolds, big, please, uh?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson? Yeah.
Those two missed them, I did call them all two places.
Anything else, Chief? Anything else, Chief?
Yes, uh, to go over the calls for the, I'm trying to be quick, Neil, I, I'm not asking for any more money, I'm done, I'm done. But, uh, so just for you guys to know, the last two weeks, we, the departments responded to eighty-three calls for service. Uh, we made, uh, we had four, let's see, I took twenty police reports and it looks like we had a total of three arrests. Um, you guys knew, uh, I'm sure most of you have heard about the, we have a pawn shop burglary, uh, Cherokee County's working with us on that. I don't, I can't say a whole lot about that investigation, but I feel like we're in the right direction with that. So, um, our officer just missed catching them in the act, but, uh, we did have, we did have a guy out and was able to, uh, at least get them out of, get them out of town after, I guess they took some stuff from the pawn shop, but, um.
How did they break into that?
They went, he busted out the bottom panel of the door and went under the, the door, yeah. So in and out of this in like a minute and.
How could you gather eight guns and get out there in one minute?
They're right by the front.
I got, I said, it's all video.
Know what's standing, you're going to grab.
Exactly, exactly. So anyway, like I said, that, Cherokee County's working with us on that, and so I feel like we're going in the right direction on, on that case, so. But, uh, other than that, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Uh, Josh?
I just really have a couple of updates. Um, our roof at Public Works insurance paid like twenty-eight thousand and some change. Our, I got a few bids, we didn't have to because it's just insurance, it's off public funds. Um, so the Roof Master's bid was a hundred and ninety-three thousand, a hundred and eight dollars. I called two other places, I won't name them because I wouldn't quote it, and then Ridge Line quoted it for twenty-nine thousand, seven ninety, so they're going to start rebuilding next week on replacing our roof on our shop, pole barn and a shed.
What was the other bid?
One ninety some. The one ninety, they were replacing all the metal on the, on the pole barn, which is, that thing's like a fifty or sixty by a hundred. So I think that's where the, the money came in. Ridge Line is going to put a coating on it, they guarantee a coating for fifty years, I think that's good enough. They're going to fix the metal that's there and seal it all, so it'll be in better shape than it was before the storm. I mean, right now we've still just got a tar up on the roof and we're still getting leaks. So, uh, Pickleball Court, they started moving her off last week, so they should hopefully start coordinating next week, if the rain holds off, it's not going to, but. And then I had, should have more of an update on the, um, water tower painting project next week. They've, they're just, the only update I was able to get between last meeting and this meeting was they're putting a crew together and hope to be here soon.
Be here soon.
Yeah, so we paid them, that, I don't know if you guys saw in preparations, that's why it was so high, we paid them the upfront half. Down payment, should, yeah, now that they've been paid, they should get through them, so. Somebody told me last time they're here, they slept out the tower in tents, so I don't know if they're kind of like asphalt guys that move around or.
When was the last time it was painted, by the way?
Oh, I had that two thousand and twelve, twelve, I think. I noticed that, randomly we had it sideways, ran and cleaned off some of the mold. I don't think it's a discount, it looks like they, it looks like it's a little cleaner than it was. Um, that's all I really have.
Okay, City Court? City Attorney? All right. Ms. Franklin never came back in, all right, would anybody like to?
I think I motioned.
We have a motion by Neil Ogle's feet, a second by Bobla Turner to adjourn, all in place.
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you.